The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, August 8, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one nation, indivisible.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you for this nation that we're blessed to be a part of. And Lord God, we ask you to change all of our hearts to be more pleasing to you, from the President to those of us who are in this room here tonight. Lord, we ask you to lead and guide our mayor and commissioners and every presenter in what they have to share, Lord, for the best for the City of Brownsville. We thank you for all of these things, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
We'll begin with the mayor's activity update.
Just one shout-out to the Housing Authority. I don't know whether Carla or I think if anybody from the Housing Authority, but congratulations on that $20 million award from the state. That's affordable housing is a wonderful thing, guys. Everybody deserves to have that opportunity. And until we get that income inequality closer together, close that gap, at least we can accommodate people in a form of housing that's affordable. So congratulations and thank you.
Next, we have the Commissioner's activity update.
I'd like to congratulate Chief Rodriguez on his retirement and wish him a very happy and long retirement and thank him for all his dedicated service to the citizens of this community. So I hope everybody will have the same well wishes for Chief Rodriguez as I do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'll just update you on a couple items. The Tiger Grant is currently in its final drafting stages of the agreement. It's been reviewed by different federal agencies, so we expect to have a final signed agreement within by September 30th. That's one item. The bike share program will also be ending. August 29th, the bikes will be all removed from the areas, and we'll be providing you a summary of how that went in the next coming meetings or so. And then item number three, homers, renters, and business owners in Brownsville are encouraged to attend. There's a flood risk open house at the event center hosted by FEMA in the county. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Proclamation, I think-
Next, we have the proclamation for Mr. Jay Medina. Would please come up?
Proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring the 2018 Tom Landry Award of Excellence winner, Mr. Jay Medina. Whereas the Tom Landry Award of Excellence was initiated in 2016 by RGVsports.com and A-Media to honor the legacy of the former Dallas Cowboys football coach and mission native, Tom Landry. Landry coached the Cowboys from 1960 to 1968 and holds the franchise record for 250 career wins. He led the Cowboys to five Super Bowls, winning two. Whereas Jay Ryan Medina was born in Brownsville, Texas, to Jay and Janice Medina. The younger Jay Medina began his athletic career at the age of four when his parents enrolled him in Little League baseball, setting a foundation of sportsmanship, including values like strong work ethic, dedication, respect, and perseverance. Jay participated in football, basketball, track, cross-country, and band. Whereas on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, RGVsports.com and A-Media Texas, in conjunction with the RGV Sports Hall of Fame, hosted the All Valley Sports Awards banquet and conference center. Hannah Early College High School student Jay Medina was named the winner of the annual Tom Landry Award of Excellence and was awarded a $2,000 scholarship. Jay Medina demonstrated a commitment to excel not only on the baseball field, but in the classroom. Jay's mother, Janice, impressed upon her son the importance of an education and good study habits. This instruction led Jay to finish each school year ranked at the top of every class. Jay credits his success to the unwavering support of his parents, grandparents Nicho and Irma Galvan, Renee and Ms. Medina, and coaches Mark Guess, James Wicks, J.C. Ramirez, Eddie Garcia. Whereas Jay Medina graduated from Hannah Early College High School with a 4.5 grade point average and was academically ranked 19th out of a graduating class of more than 600 students. Jay Medina begins his undergraduate education at the University of Texas at Austin McCombs School of Business in the fall of 2018. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all citizens, do hereby recognize and honor the 2018 Tom Landry Award of Excellence winner, Jay Medina, and further call upon the citizens of Brownsville to celebrate the accomplishments of Jay Medina and his inspiring example of commitment to excellence, done on this, the seventh day of August, 2018.
Jay, you want to say a few words for us? I think congratulations.
Is that on?
It should be.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm extremely humbled and blessed to be receiving this proclamation. I wouldn't have been able to do this without the love and support and the guidance from my family, my grandparents, and my coaches. So this is just, it feels good to know that hard work, you know, in the classroom or on the baseball field, the football field, doesn't go unnoticed. So I will continue my mindset as to be the best I can possibly be in, no matter what I'm doing, at UT Austin, and I hope, you know, after college and after my career, I hope to come back to Brownsville and to give back to my community.
Good. Thank you. We want you. We want you.[463.12][463.12](applause)
Next, we have the presentation Employee of the Month, Ms. Norma Garcia, Equipment Operator 2, Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
What the airport would like to do is thank the city and thank Norma for her employment at the airport, her exemplary performance, and her outstanding work ethic. So with that, Norma, we'd like to present you with this award, as well as a pen and a watch. If you'd like to say a word or two.
Okay. First, I want to say thanks to City of Brownsville, Mayor, Commissioners, and of course, my director and everybody that was involved in this. Thank you again, and I will continue to work as hard as I can. Thanks.
Okay, and thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it very much.
Next, we have consent agenda items A and B.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have our public hearings. Public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2018-1033-A, amending Chapter 14, Article 2, Section 14-57, ex-official members.
Good evening again, Commissioners and Honorable Mayor. The airport right now is looking to amend our ordinance to our airport board. We'd like to add an ex-officio member specifically to represent the South Padre Island, since we've been working much more closely with them in all of our efforts at the airport, both developmentally and through air service.
Is any, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here on this issue? Not all entertain a motion to close.
Are they contributing anything to our, do they contribute in any way financially?
Yes, in the past-
Not with you.
Sure, sure.
But just South Padre Island in itself, we call it the Brownsville South Padre Island Airport.
In the past six months, they've given us $100,000.
Okay.
And we continue, we expect to continue that relationship through various projects-
And they donated it in the form of?
Cash.
Yeah, but for what?
Specifically air service.
Okay.
So they're looking for more visitors?
So they stepped up to the plate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would consider that a very significant, you know, participation level.
Well, that's why we hadn't done it in the past. That's why we hadn't given them a seat in the past.
Right.
Okay.
We've been really working on our relationship with the island, the mayor, the city manager, as well as the CBB out there.
Okay. Thank you.
I move to accept them as ex-official members.
We got to close public hearing.
All those in favor of closing public hearing?
Aye.
All those to approve this-
Can you be a second, Mayor? I'm sorry, there was no second. There was no second.
There isn't.
Oh, I thought, yeah, there was a second.
I thought there was. I will second the motion to close public comment.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eight.
Public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on resolution number 2018-037, authorizing the filing in fiscal year 2018, Section 5307 and Section 5339, applications with the Federal Transit Administration and Operating Administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C., Chapter 53, Title 23, United States Code.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Sarah Jovanic, and I am the Grant and Public Outreach Manager, and along with me is Robert J. Garza, our Assistant Director, and we're from the city's Transportation Department, Brownsville Metro. The City of Brownsville Transportation Department, Brownsville Metro, seeks a public hearing in action on resolution number 2018-037, authorizing the filing of fiscal year 2018, Section 5307 and Section 5339, application with the Federal Transit Administration and Operating Administration of the United States Department of Transportation for the assistance and authority by 49 U.S.C., Chapter 53, Chapter 23 of the United States Code. Each year, the Federal Transit Administration publishes the Apportionment Grant Funding Program notices authorized under the Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, known as FAST, and the Consolidated Apportionment Act of 2018. This year, the Federal Transit Administration published the full apportionment notices on May 2018. Brownsville Metro has been recognized by the Federal Transit Administration to receive federal, urban, area, formula, Section 53 subsidy, in the interest of providing direct transit services to our Brownsville citizens. This funding provides assistance in capital, operating, and planning expenses for the development, improvement, and the use of public transportation in urbanized areas. Our large urban metro systems that receive also this type of federal grant subsidies are like Houston Metro, Austin Capital Metro, Dallas Area Rapid Transit, and the Corpus Christi Regional Transit Authority. Transportation is crucial solution to the region and Brownsville's economical, social, and environmental health infrastructures. This round of 2018 funding, the City of Brownsville was eligible for operating and capital assistance. The total proportion project cost is of $4,379,992. The city's total contribution will be $1,792,109, leveraging the $2,587,883 from the Federal Transit Administration. The local match will come from the city's public transportation funds, fiscal year 2018 and 2019 budget. It's approximately represents 52% of the proposed funding allocation. The operating assistance line item has a 50/50 split match between federal and local of $1,526,851, totaling a total of $3,53,702. This funding allows the city to continue providing fixed route services for Brownsville commuters to work, education facilities, medical appointments, shopping, and recreation activities. The next category that you see there is the capital assistance. The two line items are preventive maintenance and planning, which has a 80 federal and 20 local split match. The city's preventative maintenance portion will be of $258,788, and the federal portion will be of $1,035,153 for activities, supplies, materials associated with fleet maintenance expenses. The short-range transit planning, the city's portion will be $6,470. Federal will be $25,879,000. And there is a shared cost with Brownsville Metropolitan Planning Organization, and within that, we share the Transit Planner, and our Transit Planner participates in monthly NPO coordination planning meetings. Not only that, but with also with the regional public transportation coordination planning, the NTT reporting, she monitors, analyzes ridership on bus routes and new service options. Now we go to Section 5339. This is the Federal Bus and Bus Facilities Formula Grant, which provides assistance to bus and bus facilities to replace, rehabilitate, and purchase buses and other related equipment. Since 2014, the City of Brownsville's Transportation Department, Brownsville Metro, has been recognized by this subsidy in the interest of providing direct fixed route transit services to our Brownsville citizens. In this round of fiscal 2018 funding, Brownsville Metro was eligible for the apportionment total cost of $373,337. The city's contribution will be of $56,000, leveraging the $317,337 from the Federal Transit Administration. The local match will be from the city's public transportation funds, fiscal year 2018 and 2019 budget. The federal share of eligible costs is at 85%, and the net capital project cost and the local match is at 15%. Some little bit of little facts here. To purchase one transit vehicle, the department has to accumulate a total of two years' worth of Bus and Bus Facilities Formula Grant funding to be able to buy the cost of just one transit vehicle, which is roughly $650,000, just one bus. These funds help the Federal Transit Administration and the Brownsville Metro staff to work closely together in this initiative to provide frequency of services and connectivity to many of the residents, allowing an interlink to the city centers of employment, education, healthcare services, and recreation areas. The city's Transportation Department impacts both urbanized and rural populations by providing grander solutions and opportunities and improving regional and local economic, social, health, environmental services, and recreational areas to revitalize the community and quality of life. The city is required to provide an opportunity for public to comment on proposed programs and performance of Brownsville Metro. A public hearing notice that included the program of projects, as you can see there on the slide, were published in the legal notices portion of the classified action ads of the Brownsville Herald y el Nuevo Eraldo on Sunday, June 24th and July 29th of this year. And something that has already, another federal program grant that is meeting an annual deadline is the Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities, also known as Section 5310. This one allows the department to administer the Federal Transit Administration fiscal year 2018 for the Brownsville Urbanized Zone area. The goal of the program is to improve mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities throughout the country by removing barriers to transportation services and expanding the transportation mobility options. Brownsville Metro advertised public notices twice in the Brownsville Herald y el Nuevo Eraldo and on the department's website to inform organizations like government authorities, private nonprofit organizations, or also other operators of public transportation that receive Section 5310 grants indirectly through a recipient can apply for capital projects for this round of funding through an application process. Currently, no applications have been received, and if there are no public comments, then this will allow Brownsville Metro to self-certify for the Section 5310 grant programming and funding. Brownsville Metro is recommending your authorization on resolution 2018-037 for interim city manager to execute fiscal year 2018, Section 5307 and Section 5339 applications. Thank you.
Very good. Is anyone here on this issue, this item?
I just want to say I appreciate the bus system, and one more time, I would like to mention that if we can do what they do in Europe and have a route signs at every bus stop, it would make the system much more usable. Right now, if you just decide, I'm going to take the bus today, it's not worth the effort to figure out how to do it. In Frankfurt, 30 years ago, you could walk up to any bus stop, the color-coded sign was there with the routes, and you could figure out how to go where you're going without even knowing the language. And it was so easy. It's not an expensive item, and I would really like to see Brownsville implement that. I know Commissioner De Leon mentioned that at one point as well. He's been to Europe. It works well. Our ridership would go way up if we do that. And so that's my little bit of input. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else? Not all entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine.
Public hearing number nine. Public hearing in action on resolution number 2018-038, certifying that notice has been provided by Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, expressing no objection to the proposed application for Casitas Palo Alto and authorizing such other actions necessary or convenient to carry out this resolution.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. This is a resolution required by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for non-competitive 4% housing tax credit applications. And through resolutions like this one, local governments are to express objection or no objection to a proposed affordable housing development within their jurisdiction. So for reference, 4% housing tax credits are granted to developments that use tax-exempt bonds as a component of their financing. And so unlike 9% housing tax credits, which make the bulk of the applications that we have presented to you before, there are no public hearings involved for 4% housing tax credits. And so hence the importance of this public meeting, which is an opportunity for both the general public and you all as well, to comment on the proposed development. So to provide you with a general overview, CDCB is proposing to build 120 units servicing 60% of the area medium income. And so this multifamily project will be located east of Old Alice Road, which is across from the sports park. And so among the amenities being proposed include a children's playground and a community room. And so once again, this is a public hearing and requires action ratifying a no objection position to the proposed development.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue? Not all entertain a motion to-
Are the tax credits from the city or who?
It's from the state. They're submitting an application to the low-income housing tax credit program.
And basically, it just asks us to kind of-
So essentially, so with 9%, the state actually takes it upon themselves to do or host the public hearings, sorry, the public hearings or the public meetings. And so with 4%, since they're not competitive, they have no way of knowing whether the city endorses the application or they have an issue with the application. So this is why we're doing this public hearing.
Does that recommend?
Yes, yes. They actually, we actually reviewed their application. There's just staff, a group, planning department staff, and other departments as well in that group. And so we reviewed the application, we ranked it, and so it's actually the same application that we presented last time, except that it was 9%. So the other one was non-competitive. It didn't get selected, so now they're trying as a 4%.
Okay. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve? Or is that?
So it will be to accept the-
Oh, that's the one that didn't have action on it, but it was up there. The attorney said it was okay, so now we need to have a motion to approve.
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine. Item number 10?
Public hearing number 10. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-028, to rezone from dwelling Z to dwelling G for 143.5 acre tract of land, more or less, out of portion of lots 42, 43, 44, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 61, 62, 63, 64, and 65, Palo Alto Grove subdivision number one, and share 22 of the Espirito Santo grant located near Old Alice Road.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This first case is quite large. It's over 100 acres. This, just for reference, this area right here, I'm sorry, that's green. This area right here, due east of the portion that's asking to be rezoned, is for the Casitas Palo Alto, which was the last resolution. This is also a CDCB development. This will be for single-family homes. It's six phases, over 600 single-family lots. To the east, there is going to be undeveloped land. To the south, there's going to be undeveloped land, single-family dwellings. To the west is the sports park, and to the north is undeveloped land. Here's the zoning map. This area is currently zoned dwelling Z. They're asking to rezone to dwelling G. Again, this is for single-family. The area in green is for apartments. Casitas Palo Alto has already been rezoned to accommodate the intensity and the use that they would desire. This is the 200-foot radius map. There were 40 mailouts and zero written opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Z to dwelling G, and this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use map.
Is anyone here on this issue?
I just have one comment. On the use of the property, when we take it and put all the houses, we need to make sure that the streets, the roads, follow the general outlines for east-west, north-south thoroughfares, so we make sure that we have the right aways in place when they go back to rezone this thing or put in the subdivision or whatever, because too often, sometimes our only option to get from one side of the property to the other side of the property in the future would be to go around it, like Brownsville Country Club. So we got to keep that in mind. I'm not sure if it affects the impact of what's going on right now, but in the future, we need to consider those things, planning and zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else?
Want to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11.
Public hearing number 11. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-027, to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G for lot 4, block 70, West Brownsville Edition, located at 1735 West Adams Street.
This property is 0.1377 of an acre. It's currently zoned dwelling A, and they're asking it to be rezoned to dwelling G. It's currently zoned dwelling A, and they're asking it to be rezoned to dwelling G. In all directions around this property, there are single-family dwellings. To the east, there also are some apartments. Here is the zoning map. Most of the area is zoned dwelling A. The green is going to be for apartment, most of it apartment age. Here's the 200-foot radius map. There were 26 mailouts and zero written opposition. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A to dwelling G.
Anyone here on this issue?
Want to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12.
Public hearing number 12. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-030 to allow wireless communication facility, a general retail 4C use, in medium commercial X6CX for a 1.652 acre tract out of a 3.360 acre tract in block 3 and 4 of Chicago Gardens subdivision, located at 2155 South Minnesota Avenue.
This property is 1.652 acres. They are asking for a specific use permit for a cellphone tower, essentially. To the north, southeast, and west, there is undeveloped land. Also to the south, there are some single-family dwellings. Here is the zoning map. This area, as well as the area to the west, is zoned medium commercial 6C. To the north is dwelling. To the south, where it's white, that is outside of city limits, that is our ETJ. There were nine mailouts and zero written opposition. Here is the site plan. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow a wireless communication facility in medium commercial X6CX, with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations, as determined through the site plan review process.
Is the applicant the owner of the rest of the land around it?
Yes.
Okay, so he or she is aware that if, should they ever want to subdivide and make a subdivision, they're not going to, they're going to be in violation of our ordinance, right?
If they sell the property, then yes.
Okay. Or say, if they were to decide to subdivide. They do understand that when you go residential there, you are in essence violating the ordinance, and more than likely, your project will be denied because you have a cellphone tower within a residential area. That's just for the, in the future, because they might want to do something with the property in the future.
We did not have?
Was this told to the applicant?
We did not have that exact conversation. They do have a representative who is here tonight.
I think that the applicant, that's information that the applicant should know. Is there a representative here?
Yes.
Okay. Is your client fully aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Want to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearing number 13. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-031 to allow a used car lot, a light commercial use, in medium retail A for lot 18 and 19, block 12, Ebony Heights subdivision, save and accept a 0.167 acre tract out of lot 19, located at 1805 Greenbrier Avenue.
This property is 0.1767 of an acre. They are asking for a specific use, specific use permit for a used car lot. This property had previously received a specific use permit for the same use in 2006. They're asking for a new one in order to comply with all code requirements. To the nor, this is along the expressway. Greenbrier is to the south, and it's along the expressway. To the north, there are apartments and commercial businesses. To the east, there are commercial businesses as well. As to the south, single-family dwellings and commercial businesses. To the west, there are single-family dwellings. Here is the zoning map. This property is currently zoned medium retail 3C. Again, they're asking for that specific use permit. Along the expressway, there is light industrial 7C across the expressway, as well as to the south, a little. To the north of the property, there is apartment and general retail 4C. There were 14 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. Here is the site plan. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow a used car lot in medium retail A, 3CA, with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations, as determined through the site plan review process.
Is anyone here on this issue? You support, okay. Is there someone else, young man?
I'm against it.
Okay.
Please state your name and, to the Commissioners.
James Alveletta.
Right to the audience.
You just give your name for the record.
My name is James Alveletta, and I own the property immediately next door to this, and I'm speaking in opposition to this. This is a residential neighborhood. There's no way that they can have a feasible car lot here without having to go, without having to park overflow on the street, which they could do since it's not illegal. Many used car lots will use that. And in addition to that, there's a number of elderly people that live on the end of the street there. I live with my grandfather, he's one of them. And with the overflow parking, should there be a need for emergency services, they won't be able to park in front of the house. Additionally, I mean, I know of neighbors that couldn't be here today that do not support it, that spoke out at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And they're, they brought up with the cars, because they have parked cars in the past on there, that they're too close. You can't see around the corner, it's a sharp turn there, which causes a safety issue. Since, and also, I just recently got the land, or the property there, and I'm starting to go, I'm starting to revitalize it. Going and putting a car lot there tanks that property value and gives me absolutely no incentive, and it basically kills the block. This industrial right here killed the end of Loma Linda. The car lot there had cars parked along the side, including one derelict vehicle, that right before the Planning and Zoning Commission got moved. And they've been minding their Ps and Qs, but for how long? This is a residential neighborhood. It's on the expressway, but it's a residential neighborhood. People live here in single, single-dwelling homes. And that's why I'm in complete opposition to this, and ask you to vote no to this car lot.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioner, City Commissioners, and Mayor Martinez. My name is Rebecca Gomez, and I live right across this lot on the freeway. I have lived there since 2001. Now, this is an area that true, there may be single-family dwellings, and so many or not one or two elderly people. I don't know who the gentleman is referring to, but if he's referring to my front, across the street neighbor who is adjacent to this lot. I used to speak to my neighbor in times when he was well. I understand he's now confined to his home, which is okay. And I have dealt with so many issues where I live. True, the street, when you come off the expressway on Greenbrier, it's kind of narrow. There's a lot of streets, they're all narrow. But there is no reason why we should deny this rezoning to this property owner, who I'm sure pays a lot of taxes. One, this property has been like that, empty, since 2001. Three or four months ago, there was an intoxicated person, or there was a wreck. This truck ran off the freeway, across that empty lot, because it is so convenient next to the freeway. It's almost like a stretch, asking for, what happened with the car? It went into my next known neighbor's house. So, why do I support this? One, because it's an open piece of land, huge enough to contribute to the rest of the city's growth. This city is growing a lot under your direction, Mayor, and the City Commission, and it's true. I'm a taxpayer. I vote and I get involved, and I know what's going on. And I am going to vote for your reelection, because you inspire growth, the growth that I have seen from Rancho Viejo to Boca Chica. I have to exit on Boca Chica to get to my land. This person has to exit on Boca Chica to get to the land. I mean, we are completely surrounded. We have Channel 23 across. Okay, are we going to be oppressed because we're a single family? I'm single family, I don't mind it. In fact, it's so dark there, and so invites so many accidents, and, and, and I mean, it's just become a giant walking path at the expense of the owner, who's paying taxes, and I feel has a right to reap what he sowed, you know? So, why am I so? And I don't think, I dispute, and, and I totally object to what this gentleman is saying. He's saying, "There's so many other people, wow, I see nobody here." The only person I see is me and him. Now, he says he lives with his grandfather, that's fine with me. I lived with three grandkids for five years in that freeway, and they're now gone, and teenagers, and nothing happened to them. When there's an ambulance needed, there's enough room for the ambulance, cops, everybody. There is absolutely no problem with a car lot there, Mayor. So I'm in support of it, and I will continue supporting it. Why? Because it will contribute to a healthier area with a business with lights, and giving somebody else the opportunity on our end of the freeway. I mean, there's little businesses struggling there. Durans, we have Durans, and, and across the street, we have Channel 23. And we can't have a little car lot there? We have another, right past Greenbrier, the next street, we have a car lot. There's a car lot there? I mean, was it grandfather's? I don't know. But I have no problem with it. I live right across it. He lives with his grandfather. I don't know if he pays taxes there. I pay a lot of taxes there. So, that's my point, Your Honor. I mean, Your Honor, at this point, I feel like that, because it feels like this, this is very important to me. When that truck crossed over that lot and got into my neighbor's house, I couldn't even get in because of deep, troopers, and, I mean, it was massive. But if we had had a car lot there, or a business, because I have to put things around to protect, that wouldn't have happened. That's my point.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Appreciate it.
I have a question for Planning and Zoning. What did the Planning and Zoning Commission, how did they feel about this?
They did support it. One of the main reasons is it's currently zoned commercial, so there could be a commercial building there, as well as parking along the front. One of the gentlemen that was, citizens that was there against this at the meeting was concerned with traffic safety, and the Planning and Zoning Commission saw that if it was a car lot, or if it was a retail business, there would be traffic and parked cars.
But there has been objection, even though it says there were no returned written objection, there has been objection voiced at Planning and Zoning, and as well tonight.
Yes, the Planning and Zoning, two people spoke against it.
I'm trying to make sense of the site plan. And the entrance to the car lot will be from the expressway or from one of the residential streets?
It would be from Greenbrier, a residential street.
And I see that their, their landscape is facing towards the expressway?
Yes.
That doesn't make sense.
The previously approved site plan had a very similar layout. It also had access through Greenbrier. One of the concerns was access through the expressway, and whether or not Text Dot would allow it. If it was a car lot, or if it was a commercial business, they would have to access off a side street.
Did they petition Text Dot?
I believe so.
My only concern is that you're going to bring a lot of traffic that runs on that expressway through the neighborhood. And I don't feel, feel that it's right for people who chose to live in a residential area to now have a business opening in their neighborhood. It's our job to protect our neighborhoods, so that's my only concern.
That's mine as well.
Any, anyone else here on this issue?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Saul Quintero, and I'm, I'm one of the owners, including my father. No, no, not him. He's sitting there.
Just to reinstate what she had mentioned earlier, the property is already a commercial
property, so a business is going to be, you know, set up there. The traffic, the, the building and everything in the property is designed for the traffic to come in and out, specifically for the business there. Everything was designed back in 2006, I believe, or when, when the first plan was quite set up, it was already approved. We're only here to try to abide and come into regulation and meet every single code that is, that is, you know, now in date. That's the reason we're actually here. More than a public issue, I feel like the only gentleman attacking this is a personal issue against us, because the cars that he says are parked there, the way the property is trashed, and this is not, those are not our vehicles. Me, me myself, I've been involved in the business for seven years. My father owns two exactly same, similar businesses on Southmost Road, which he's managed for over 25 years. Lot of campaigns and different things are set up in that property, and I believe even some Commissioners, the other place where he has his other businesses on Southmost, it's right at the entrance of the public library. You can go buy that business. We own that right there, both of those businesses side by side. Everything is always kept up to park there clean. The businesses he says are besides that one, we don't own those. We are not affiliated with those people. This is going to generate more jobs, it's going to generate more opportunity for the people that are going to be involved in it. All we're trying to do here today, I believe, is get up to park and up to code to all the regulations that are in now. In my personal opinion, I think it'll be beneficial to Brownsville, because not only, like the lady mentioned, we're paying taxes, but the revenue and everything that our business collects is a lot, ranging from $300 to $500, not gross, just overall. So we do pay a lot of taxes, and we want to keep everything in Brownsville. That's why we have two other businesses on Southmost Road.
Appreciate it very much.
My only, my only concern is your entrance on Greenbrier. Is there anything that you could do to have an entrance from the expressway versus Greenbrier?
That's actually my department. I'm part of the deciding team, the signing team, and it's actually would be more dangerous to have it towards the expressway, which is why they allow us to have it on that side.
But you do realize that you have votes against you, and that would probably help you?
Yes, but we try to go with, with the laws and regulations that they require us, for us to do.
So the laws aren't permitting you to have an entrance?
No, I believe not. They only allow us to have?
Text Dot told you? Text Dot told you you couldn't have an entrance?
Yes, I believe they, they allowed us to do. Yeah, they are, this is approved by Text Dot.
My other thought is, with respect, you have had it zoned that way for a great deal of time, but in that time, it's become much more popular to stand up for your neighborhood.
deal of time, but in that time, it's become much more popular to stand up for your neighborhood and revitalize neighborhoods, and I think that for me personally, I need to support that. And, and I apologize, but times change for me personally, and the support of this commission towards families that do wanna revitalize their homes is important.
The only thing that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On that, really quick on that note, the building and everything, obviously, would be brand new. This is a brand new construction, everything is gonna meet up to code. The building, I believe we have some plans and examples that you can see. It's, it's beautiful in a way. Neighbors in the back of their homes, I've seen tires, grass up to my knees, everything. The whole thing about revitalizing the neighborhood and this and that hasn't happened since 2001, 2006, and I don't think it's gonna happen.
The only thing that I would ask you would be, you know, and it's very hard to regulate, but to refrain from having your customers, you know, like if they test drive a car, which, you know, happens a lot, park in front of the neighbor's house. Or if you could somehow accommodate them and make sure there's some type of beautification in place to protect your building from their homes, you know, just kind of a courtesy to your neighbors so that you accommodate them. If this is what Tech Dot says you have to have, obviously, the city wants our expressway front to look good, and this is, you're investing a lot of money into the property, but my concern is the neighbor next to you, as long as you accommodate them and don't park, you know, in front of their home where their mailbox is, I would ask that personally.
And definitely, I'm against all of that, especially because of the fact that we have the other property on Southmost, and it's always been an issue, you know, with the parking and everything. And the property is designed to have customer parking, and it's not gonna be filled to the max with vehicles. No, it's only about 10 or eight vehicles, I don't know the exact number on it, but that actually fit there. Nothing is gonna be crammed up, no, there's gonna be more than enough parking for customers, and until, till now, the neighbors, we, we haven't had any issues.
You show 12 slots for cars, and then everything around. My only thing is, are you gonna have a buffer with your neighbors? That's the only thing. So many times. You know what I'm saying? So, what I'm trying to get at is, will you have a buffer with your neighbors? Is, is there fencing, is there?
Yes, there will be fencing along the way, yes.
Yes, fencing as well as between the, the building and the, the next lot, there is 5.5 feet between them that they're showing is grass. If you would like it to be vegetated, that is something that we can have today.
I just, because we've done it in the past, I don't wanna deviate, I don't wanna be the person that deviates on a specific and, and be told later on by somebody, well, you deviated. Every time we have an issue like this, please provide a buffer to your neighbor, you know, so that there's, so that we won't be getting the phone, because we'll get, you're gonna get the phone calls.
Yes.
Okay? So that's what, that's what I'm trying to avoid. I'm trying to avoid disgruntled neighbors, I'm trying to invite disgruntled landowners, you know, from something as simple as, give me a buffer between you and your neighbor, so, whether it be fence, whether it be oleanders, whatever it is that, that, that our ordinance requires, but so that there can be, if we vote for them, so that there can be peace with the neighbors, some sort of peace. You know, I don't, I don't want everybody to be disgruntled with each other. That's it.
Definitely, and, and that will be provided when it comes to fencing and, and all of the above. Also, there will be no car washing there, no mechanic work, none of that. It's only retail sales, we have a, a location for that, otherwise.
Thank you all very much. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, please.
Hello, my name is Gustavo Ramirez. This is like my first time here, so I don't really know how to relax.
You're welcome, welcome, don't get, get relaxed.
I, I recently, three years ago, bought my first house right across from that lot. It used to be my father's, but he sold it to me. I have a four-year-old kid, I usually ride my bikes all the time on that same street, so I'm against the parking lot, you know. I've seen it before where they, they've had cars for sale before, and it does happen, but not often, where they do park on that section to see the cars and all that, which is fine sometimes, but, you know, that, that kind of thing, I just, I don't want that in, in my neighborhood, you know? I like, I like, I like being outside, you know, seeing, you know, other houses, not seeing a commercial, you know, that, that's why I wanna live there, because it's residential. And, you know, that's, that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this issue?
Close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would you approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Item number 14.
Public hearing number 14, public hearing in action on first read on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe32-CO to rezon from general retail G to apartment H for lot 1, block 1, Cherry Estates Edition subdivision located at 3405 East Ruben Torres Boulevard.
This property is 1.05 acres. It's at the intersection of FM 802 and Dana Avenue. To the north are single-family dwellings and commercial businesses. To the east and west are commercial businesses, and to the south, there's undeveloped land, single-family dwellings, and commercial businesses. Here is the zoning map. To the west, there is medium commercial, which is 6C. To the south, there is general retail 4C. To the east, directly abutting the property, it is zoned apartment with a conditional overlay, which we are proposing again tonight. Directly north of the property is dwelling. There were 17 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from general retail G, 4CG, to apartment H, AH-CO with a conditional overlay, to permit a maximum of 16 units, to provide a minimum of a six-foot fence along the residential area, and to provide a minimum of five-foot buffer along the residential area.
Was there any opposition?
No.
No, okay. Anyone here on this issue?
Would you close, public hearing?
Second.
Bless you.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 15.
Public hearing number 15, public hearing in action on first read on ordinance number 235-2018-906 to rezon from dwelling Y to dwelling F for lot 5 through lot 42, block 11, Rio del Sol subdivision, section 4, located near Abrahamson Drive.
This is a city-initiated case to rezon the property from dwelling Y to dwelling F. Essentially, the reason is to reduce the setbacks. When this area was annexed, it was in 1995, and it was developed prior to that. When it was annexed, this area was given dwelling Y. Dwelling Y has a front setback of 50 feet, it is almost entirely built out, and they do not meet the 50-foot setback. This will be bringing these homes into compliance. So north, south, east, and west are single-family dwellings. There's also undeveloped land to the north and to the east along 511. Here is the zoning map. So this area is zoned dwelling Y, but the areas to the south and to the north in the same subdivision is zoned dwelling F. This would match the rest of the neighborhood. Along 511, there is a light retail 2C. There were 140 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Y to dwelling F.
So just to be clear, this doesn't change, well, I mean, it changes, right, but it doesn't, it doesn't endanger any of the lots that wouldn't be developed to become anything different than what's already there in Rio del Sol, right?
Correct, it would remain residential.
Right.
Is anyone here on this issue?
Close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearing number 16, public hearing in action on first read on ordinance number 235-2018-907 to rezon from dwelling Y to dwelling F for block 3, Rio del Sol subdivision, section 2, block B and reserve B, Rio del Sol subdivision, section 3, block A, Harbor Heights subdivision, section 1, block 1, Palmas del Sol subdivision, and 0.504 acres, more or less situated in the BM Colin subdivision of Farm Block 182, El Jardín subdivision, located near Rancho Viejo Boulevard.
This is also a city-initiated case in the same location. I'm gonna, right here, outlined in the red circle, that is the area that you just approved the rezoning of. This is in the same area with the same situation from dwelling Y to dwelling F. To the north, south, east, west, there is undeveloped land as well as single-family dwellings. Here is the zoning map. To the west of this property, where it's white, that is part of the ETJ, it's not within city limits. To the east, there's zoned dwelling, as well as along 511, there are commercial categories. There were 290 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Y, DY, to dwelling F, DF.
Anyone here on this issue?
Close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing number 17, public hearing in action on first read on ordinance number 2018-1642, setting the rates to be charged for the sale of film material from the city's cent pit.
I don't know, members of the City Commission, the city owns a cent, cent pit that's about 272.6 acres of land, it's located on 1419 Dairy, or Board, Dairy Berry, Dockberry Road. There are some guidelines that we have established in the sale of this cent pit, and the way it's gonna work is we're gonna have the, of course, the Public Works Director will be the contact person, he'll be contacting some of these potential, potential buyers such as LNGs, PUB, other contractors. He will be the negotiator to set the price. The price of this ordinance has, the minimum rate would be $2 per cubic yard, but we can go higher based on market conditions. And again, the negotiator will be the finance director, he will be, he'll set the sales price based on market conditions and cost that will be incurred for excavation and loading, and, and again, the minimum rate will be $2 per cubic yard. It's a public hearing, so.
Anyone here on this issue? Do not entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fair motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Pete.
Public hearing number 18, public hearing to discuss the city's proposed fiscal year 2019 budget.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is gonna be our first public hearing on fiscal year 2019 proposed budget based on the city manager, city manager and director's request. So what I wanna do, start out tonight, is I think when we start the budget, we have to look at demographics. So, I wanna include a workforce and glance. As you can see, we have 72% male and 28% gender, and I would like to focus on the generations. There's always a discussion that millennials are leaving or people are leaving. I think if we look at our, there's about a good 32% are millennials that we're keeping, and I wanna focus on the 42% as well. I'm part of that 42%, and I think the young gentleman said as hell, go to college, leave out experience, and bring back that experience to the city of Brownsville. So, I, it's kind of, the generations is an important aspect as we look through it. So I just wanna show, that is where our workforce looks at. Another important one is our leadership. As of now, our higher, this is the highest level education our city leadership looks at. If you look at it, 77% of our leadership has obtained a higher education degree, and that is specifically before we came into the city, to came to work. Now, as we move forward and now present, is we have certifications that we're looking for. In addition, I think this is a very balanced in that we have the education and the experience, which I'll show, if you look at the age group, there's a very good balance between that. And then, as always, we also, you know, we have a hall to our right that honors our veterans, so we wanna show the importance of honoring our veterans as well, with knowing that 41% is the US Army, which, myself being a Navy guy, doesn't like the numbers, but we'll, we'll still count on those. Second thing important of the budget is city manager priorities. We talk about it all the time. First priority that a city manager did, I, I believe, is services at City Plaza. That's a constant thing I hear from the mayor and commissioners and from the, from the citizens is, what are we looking at? So City Plaza currently houses the city secretary, the buildings, the planning, the municipal court, health department. 80% of our customers go to this place, whether to get a permit, pay a fine, or do any other items. That, and so it's, it's a combination. As we move forward, we're continually looking to serve the citizens better and customer service. I do wanna focus point on the service of Plaza is, there's also that idea that everything's leaving to McCall and everything's going to Hardin, but if you look on, on the presentation and your handouts is, we've done 411 certificates of occupancy issued to new and existing projects, 436 permits issued for new residents, and then 288 commercial projects reviewed by plan examiners. The 288 is important, these are plans that are coming to the city of Brownsville. As we know, as you go through and building the items, they're coming, it just takes time to be developed. So, I wanna focus that we are focusing on customer service and we are business-friendly, contrary to many of the words we say, so we continue and we look for it, for the ideas. Second component is the employer of choice. We talk about it over and over again, how do we, we're one of the biggest in the city of Brownsville as an employer, but that doesn't mean that people wanna come work here. So the goal of the city management is to do employer of choice. We focus on professional development. Individuals come in, we find out a way for them to provide them autonomy, an opportunity for them to learn skills and bring their education up. So we, we, so professional, professional thing, so we look at performance and results, promoting talent to the right places, and treating our employees as assets and investments. That's what we need to do when individuals do come in. Specifically, we're looking at the millennials, that's a great, that's one of our, our tasks. The second item we're looking at is the certification pay. We ask individuals, and we've asked for people who are certified, go get, go get a training, go get a certificate in AC. Well, we've learned how to put a number to that now. It's based on performance measurement and your certification. So, so we offer that as well for people who wanna come in and say, I wanna be certified in engineering, I wanna be certified in HVAC and AC, we offer this opportunity as well and compensate them for that. The other thing is, when you combine all these two, you're, you're cultivating a cultivation of innovation, a culture of innovation where we're no longer worried, report fraud. Now we're looking at saying, hey, come up with your great ideas. Come in and tell us where, what, what did you see out there that makes, efficiently makes the city government work in hand in hand. So, it, it allows, with these combinations of professional development, certification pay, culture innovation, it allows us, the city, to make a data-driven decision. It's no longer more on its feelings and it goes back to strategic planning. So you bring individuals in, so this is the second component, as, as city management focuses on. The third component, and it's not the all-inclusive, but traditionally, people focus on a balanced budget, but when you do a balanced budget, that covers you for the first year. The idea we're focused on is a healthy and sustainable budget. And with a healthy state of budget, we offer two items, the alternative financing, which is BCIC, GBC, those are your traditionals, your federal state. The new one we're adding is the public and private partnerships. As you, Mayor and Commissioners, we've gotten money from, working with the West Brownsville Little League, and we're working with other agencies if they can bring money in and we can match with them. So we can, continue with that item. The second focus we're looking at is capital improvements. I put the street on there to reiterate that the stream is part of the drainage system. So we're starting to focus money on, on the drainage system and our parks and our airport. Again, we're shooting for a healthy, sustainable budget, that's our core goal. And Commissioners, that was what the, the priorities of the city manager is, right? The, that's what we're setting out, and that's what this budget was built on, that's the foundation for it. So I wanna go on to community priorities. We didn't wanna leave out the community priorities when we dealt this project. So we had a budget town hall. Individuals enjoyed it, they, they got there, they enjoyed it, and the community priorities were police and fire, traffic code, administration, streets and drainage. This was included when we're preparing the budget to propose to you as a city commission. Those Commissioners, if I go back, is the priorities, the community, the proposed from the city commission. Now I'm gonna move into the actual meat and potatoes of the budget. Again, reiterate, this is a proposed budget that I'm offering up as city management with the consulting of the directors, but US City Commission set the budget and provide me direction on which way you wanna go. So I start out with general fund revenues. Our top priority, but they're not inclusive, you do have a budget book that has the more details, but our top budget revenues are sales tax, property tax, fees and charges, license permits and fees. And if you go over, there's arrows that will show, we're, we're showing an increase for next year in the sales tax, property tax, fees in the sales tax, property tax, fees and charges, license and permit fees go down. And then I put on the right-hand side your, your, your level of controls. So I'll start out with the sales tax. Sales tax, we're gonna see an increase. And then I say indirect control, in that the city commission can't really set the sales tax, but what we can do, as, as, as we do as planners and as we do as city commission, is we can approve, I think we just did it with a, with a car slot, with a car lot, or with a commercial building, by approving those and getting those going, the sales tax can come into the city, which increases our revenues. Same thing with property tax, it's, it's limited control because it is set by an appraisal district, but we, as, as, as a city, can do the planning and help business-friendly to increase those as well. Fees and charges for services, you're gonna see an increase as well on that one. We see a limited control because while we can, while the city commission can set a fee, there's some regulatory systems that we can't charge versus a certain other fee. And I would use, we use a non-emergency transfers, for example. You can set a fee of 800, but we can only collect 200 based on some rules. So that's why there's limited control. License permits and fees, again, limited control is, if you're applying for a beer and wine permit, it depends on if you're building a bar. Other permits are being pulled on the need. So that's why there's limited control, but as you can see, we're trending very well. We propose to be increasing on all those levels. So that's on the revenue component. As you can see, I wanna move on to the major functions and of employees. The employees, as reiterated, is employees is the biggest part of the, of the budget. It, it counts for a huge percentage of it. What, 52% of the employees are assigned to public safety. If you look at the right-hand side, I was looking for, we, we talked about it amongst city management, we said, okay, let's move from being departments and now to services. It's a services-oriented city. Individuals wanna know their services more than departments. So what we got, the four components were administration, culture, recreation, mobility, and public safety. Those are the ones we're using for co- for components. So as I continue in the next slide, those are expenditures we did per those areas of things versus departments. So I'd like to go, move on to administration, and these are the expenditures that we plan to spend in the, propose to spend in the next fiscal year. I wanna remind the mayor and commission that it is a, it's your maintenance and operation. It's not any capital improvements, it's not any other items, this is just actually the cost of doing business. So if we look at the administration expenditures, the blue is your amended budget, what was from 2018, and what our proposed budget is for the future. If you look through all of them, you notice the green is, is lower on most of them. The only ones you'll see is the city secretary does have a higher decrease, and that's because the proposed election cost is 725,000. That's, that's an election cost for this year. We hope to keep it, Chrisella hopes to keep it in, in line with that one as well, but this includes that. So that's, that's if we share with another city. If, if we go with another city, then the price might go up, price might go up, we just do by ourselves, because it's a big one. The second component was, we did, with the help of Planning and Development Services, they've been asking city management for, let's get a sidewalk master plan, let's get a, an inventory of sidewalks, because as we, as we noticed, if some sidewalks were built or not built here, and we have a lot of sidewalks to nowhere, this allows us to get that master plan in, in before. I do use, Commissioner Galwin mentioned all the time, is get the plan in place, so when we do get the funding, at least we have the plan versus waiting the other way. So I, I think this is a great component, but if you have any questions on this one, you'll see administration, we kept it down, and some were reduced, and the, the goal is to reduce administration costs. We go to culture and recreation, which parks and recreation seem to, well high on the, for the, the priorities for the committee and for ourselves. As you notice, again, the green is lower than what it is proposed, and that still includes, even with the lower expenditures, we managed to get equipment and web hosting for 38,000, and checkout station maintenance for 20,000. So we still managed to provide a greater service at a lower cost, and that's because of what we're looking on, on our items. Mobility. Here's a key component, I wanna focus on that, is we're looking at mobility, metro, the airport, engineering, traffic, and public works. We have to look at them on how we get, move people around. It's no longer the B Metro carries people, you're a carrier, you're a facilitator, so we look at that one. Again, we're running on, on everybody at budget or below budget from previous year. Engineering traffic did get 180,000 for, 185,000 for signal maintenance. It's, it's to ensure the signals are working together, and I think we got a grant from Techstat that we had to come up with that difference. And that's what exclamation point to, so Pete can look at it and say, get a little worried. But that's what we have. Any questions on those so far? If not, I'll go to public safety. And I, and this one is, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Real quick, I saw that on Parks and Rec, you were able to lower the cost by almost $500,000. What were some of the things that you cut?
It was, it was not cut, what we usually look at is cutting, I don't wanna even say cut, we reduced more efficiency, the supplies, the materials on the items, and even looking at our staffing levels too, at our price and our overtime, so it was nothing.
No services, no mowing.
No, you'll, you'll see a lot, you'll see a lot of this budget is, is not reduced because of services to the individual, it's just looking at our finances and ensuring that we are using them to the best.
Okay, thank you.
Is that true of the library as well?
Yes, that's, that's true, library. The library as well, and, and this is a new one for myself, is, the libraries here is, we did, and I think Jerry, well, we had a whole conversation, is we're at $17 per person, I believe, or per capita, which is exemplary, it's pretty high, we're, we're pretty close on 70 persons, so, and the minimum is $12. So that's the conversation, the minimum is $12 per person, and we're spending 17. So we're actually pretty high on, on what our services we provide to the, to the library.
But again, the service to the user would not be...
There, there's, there's no effect to the service user, you're, you're correct.
Because our libraries are some of the most visited libraries in all of Texas?
Yes. No, no, yes, and, and you have a great library director who, who fights us on every movement I wanna think, and, and so, it's, and, and all the, all the, the directors know that too, when they came in, they fought kinda thing, and no, we're, we're not affecting services to anybody, and that's one of the greatest things I think we have.
This is like magic, it costs less and nothing changes.
It, it is, it's, it's just, it's just looking at how we use the funding, and, and actually looking at the projections and looking at, at our, how we're doing the budget.
Because these two services, or those two categories, are really very much for, the only place the poorest among us can go for a vacation, or to read a book, or use an internet connection, and so that is very important to me.
No, it, it, it is for, it is for all of us, and, and I, I agree with that, Commissioner. Public safety, again, we look at public safety. This one, if you wanna see magic, Commissioner, if, if you look at it, Brownsville PD also lowered their costs, again, without reducing services, and I think even at this point, this includes the, the vehicles that we're purchasing, Commissioner, I think Commissioner DeLeon mentioned, about take-home vehicles, that all, all our, there'll be, if not 90% of our individuals will have take-home vehicles, and even within this budget, with no increased cost. So we managed to do that. The fire department, I wanna focus on that one, is stay with the same budget, but we managed to, now we're gonna approve three permissionary firefighters. It takes a year for a firefighter personally to get trained to be out in the field, so starting them now, gets them, but we, we looked at the cost here, tight cost here, what can we do, what are the fees, what are, and, and we look at it is, when we use items such as buy board, or these other mechanisms to purchasing, that allows us to get a better cost, because now it's buying in bulk, so we're starting to use, how do we look at these items? And looking at funding that's left unused by other departments, on how we bring it back to here.
So we're adding three new firefighters?
Three, three, yes, we are.
Are we adding any new police officers?
At, at this time, we're not. At this time, we're not. We're doing the firefighters based on data-driven, so we're looking at numbers. And it's, it's, as we grow more of the, more of, like I said, emergency, the, how would I wanna put it, is, we're seeing a lot more emergency transfers coming into the city than we had previously. So, so we're offering that up too, which, the great thing about these, it's, it's a cost recovery. These, these individuals will cost recover there, there, so whatever they charge to bring them in, we'll be able to pay it for that. So that's why you see the level. Public health, just one last focus, is clinical supplies, the bark supplies, and the vector control. This vector control specifically, for those, the jargon is mosquito spraying, so we are increasing that as well. Any money we put in this public health does help us, as Art mentions to me, it helps us show that we are putting local match into it, which is very, very good to show to our state representatives to know it's not just them helping out. So it's a great component. So those are the expenditures and the revenues, Commissioner. So, Mayor and Commissioners, I don't wanna leave out though, the next one over, is we are very appreciative of our, our partners. We, 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 as, as a city, we think they're great, and we offer up, if you see the Hotel Mokel occupancy contribution is $1.4 million, that is being distributed amongst these agencies. Currently, we're in the, in the due diligence, meaning to see if any of these items, if any of these agencies do meet those requirements to gain these, if they continue to meet these requirements. But we are working with them as well, because there'll be some, some areas that will not be able to qualify, but we are working with them not to cause a great, uh, issue with them, but we are looking at it. But I wanna point out, and I think our partner Pat's back there, Pat, right there, he, Glassport Zoo, we, out of, out of the hotel tax, they do get 400,000, and then for utilities, there's an additional 405,000. So we, we are, we are great partners with, with the zoo, 'cause we understand the, the importance of having such a, a great avenue we have, so we look, look forward to that. And then I put on the other ones are just the other individuals that we do assist with utilities, and the other associations of partners, so there, there, we, we appreciate our partners, wanna show that. So we look, we, now we come to the proposed budget summary. The numbers I showed you was our, our revenues and our maintenance, so, but our expenditures, which is, goes beyond what we bring in, there's an unbalanced. And the reason it was unbalanced was, there's a civil service agreement that we did prove, which increased us by 999, almost, almost a million dollars of, it's, it's, it's within the collective bargaining agreement, it was a 3% approval. We did a 470, about approximately 400, 400,000 in city medical contribution increase, and then the election, 726, and then additional request, about 854,000 was requested throughout the department. So the idea is, as a city manager, we have to identify, our city management team, identify how do we balance that. The great thing about it, we do have an excellent finance team, so we look at tightening the belt. And before everybody says on the, on the hiring freeze, I think, let me, let me, let me work that one out a little bit. Is a temporary hiring freeze, is, it does not to stop hiring, but rather to hire smarter. We have a position review committee, so if, just because there's a slot there, doesn't mean you really need it. Can you justify where, how much time is gonna go, will the work go to somebody else? So we're just kinda saying, it's not a freeze, it's like a slow, it's like a slow frost, but a pro- projection would be a, about, I think it's for three months, hiring slow frost would be 975,000 savings. That goes back into the, the city, so we can do a balance. Because, great decisions at the city commission, we do see an increase of projected sales tax of a million, these are our projections, and our revenue, other revenue increase of 2 million, which is property tax by 941, PBU transfer, PBU cash transfer by 344, and the bridge fund ca- cash transfer by 795. These are projections, which means what? If me as a city manager, I have to live with these, these are my proposed items, so I have to look at that budget all the time to see if these projections are coming to fruition, and come tell the city commission, this is why, but I'm comfortable with this budget to allow and say, we will meet those projections.
I would like to congratulate you on doing this, because I think it was very long overdue to look at the city as a business and be smart about the way we spend our money, but one of the areas that I would like to see attention paid, and maybe some of that 975,000, maybe we could, well, I'm asking, that we hire a few more police officers.
Okay. We, we can look at that, Commissioner. We can, we can definitely look at it, Commissioner, and I'll, and I'll meet, I'll say I'll meet with Chief Rodriguez, but, so, and I'll work on that, we can...
Whoever, I would like to add, you know, one, two, whatever you will give us, we will take, because every year it gets passed on, next year, next year, it, it needs to stop, and we need to address it.
We, we could definitely do that, we could definitely do that. And I think, uh, with that, I think Chief Sheldon, he's, he came, he came and knocking on my door about the 3, 3, 3, so maybe that's what it is, but we'll definitely meet that one. Any questions on the proposed, this is what I'm proposing to, to bring you a balanced budget. I know traditionally, we bring you a budget that's unbalanced, I didn't, there was, there was no need for that. This is my proposal to you as a, as a, as a, as a city manager, to see if you're comfortable with that. So I go into, we focus on service in City Plaza, we do employer of choice, and a healthy and sustainable budget versus a balanced one. So I leave you with the public hearing, will be the next one. We'll have a draft budget filed at the city secretary's office on August 17th. We have a next public hearing on 2018 for proposed budget. During this time or any time, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm open for discussion, I'm not open for discussion, you give me direction, if, if you feel the budget needs to be changed or there's no ideas on it, but that's where we're on that one. I would like to add that we have translated this presentation in Spanish, so it'll be, it'll be pro, on Brownsville TV, it'll be coming out in Spanish, just to, so we're having, we're having that again, so, 'cause we know that our great population needs that as well.
Will it be in this format, with the, with the graphs and the...
Exactly.
I think this is wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Because whether you agree with it or not, it's very easy to follow.
Okay.
And I like it very much.
And, and that's, that's what we're looking at, Commissioner, is, I think this is, it's, the technicals, you, you as a mayor and commissioners, you guys have the technical, we're doing it for the community, so they, they wear it, it's a transparent, open thing. This item is open for it, if there's any questions to it, I think we have a healthy and sustainable budget, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good work there, Mike.
Good job.
This is a public hearing, anyone else?
Would it continue?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 19.
Next, we have the public comment period. Mayor and Commissioners, no one signed up for the public comment, so we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is items for individual consideration. Action item number 20, consideration in action to acknowledge the Cameron Appraisal District Chief's appraisal certification of the city of Brownsville 2018 tax rule.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, this item is just to acknowledge the Cameron County Appraisal District's certification of the city's tax rule for 2018.
I'll move to acknowledge. Second.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 21.
This item is also an acknowledgement item.
Action item number 21, consideration in action to acknowledge the finance director's calculation of the city's effective and rollback adv- advallarm tax rates for tax year 2018 or fiscal year 2019.
Including your package is the calculation of the effective tax, effective and rollback, rollback advallarm tax rates for 2018. This calculation is verified by finance and confirmed by the, by the county, and just as an acknowledgement item.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 22.
Action item number 22, consideration in action to acknowledge the finance director's certification of the estimated advallarm tax debt collection rate for tax year 2018 and the excess debt tax collections for tax year 2017.
Truth and calculation laws require property, under the Property Park Tax Code, require that taxing entity needs to, that levy tax debt must consider anticipation collection of debt component of its rollback tax rate. The collector for such items must certify two items of the governing body. The first item is estimate the collection rate for 2018, tax year 2018, and the excess debt tax collection for 2017. As a, as a tax collector, as a designated tax collector for the city, I'm certifying that the tax collection rate for 2018 will be 100%, and they, and that the cert, and the, and the tax collection, the excess tax collection for 2017 is at $0.
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Actually, well, can, can the Minister, if I was a motion to acknowledge?
Yes, to acknowledge, yes.
Would, okay, sorry, would it acknowledge me?
I'm sorry, I know that's what you meant.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number 23, consideration in action to discuss a possible advallarm tax rate increase and to authorize two public hearings on August 28, 2018, and on September and on September fourth, twenty eighteen, to discuss the proposed advallarm tax rate that will exceed the effective tax rate.
Honorable Mayor, truth of taxation process, truth of taxation process, this is a, the Texas Constitution sets out the general requirements for truth and taxation under tax code, chapter twenty-six, provided specifications, in general, there's five steps that need to be addressed, you draft the budget, you calculate the tax rate, you publish notices, you hold public hearings, and then you adopt the tax rate. First step is draft the budget, there's, you calculate the maintenance and operation expenses for the general fund, you calculate the debt service requirement to make your annual debt service payments, the chief appraisal prepares and certifies the taxable values of the properties in the tax union, city received the certified values on July seventeenth, on sixteenth. The next step is calculating tax rates, there's two rates that are calculated, the first one is the effective tax rate, that rate would, is a rate that would provide the taxing entity with about the same amount of revenue it receives in the year before a property's taxed in both years. The second rate that needs to be calculated is a rollback tax rate. This is, this is a maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval. The portion of the overall rate used to retire debt or your annual debt service payment may rise as high as necessary without triggering a, or triggering a rollback election. The second component is the maintenance and operation, this, this, this portion could only go up eight percent from maintenance and operation. The next step is publish notices, you have to publish notices of your, of your calculated effective tax, effective and rollback tax rate in the newspaper, and also on your website. Next one is your taxing entity must have two public hearings, if the proposed advallarm tax rate exceeds the lower of the effective tax rate or the rollback rate. And then finally, you adopt the tax rate, it must be set by ordinance. On the top end, left corner, the box, you have the increase over the effective tax rate, the calculated effective tax rate for this, for twenty eighteen tax year is point six eight eight one four one. The proposed tax rate, as proposed in the budget, is to maintain the same tax rate as we have right now, is point seven zero zero six one three, this is effectively a tax increase of one point eight percent. Again, we're, we're top right hand corner, the adopted rate for twenty seventeen is a point seven zero zero six one three, we're proposing to maintain the same tax rate. The bottom left hand corner, this is a calculated tax rate distribution, the first portion, again, the general fund or the maintenance and operation, that, that rate is point forty-eight sixty-eight oh nine, the debt service, this is a debt service amount required to take care of our debt service payments for this year is point twenty-five forty-five, total adjusted rollback tax rate, point seven four one three seven six, this is a maximum rate that we could, you could adopt without triggering a rollback election. Tonight, we're proposing that the city commission announce or authorize by vote two public hearings on August twenty-eighth and September fourth, to discuss the proposed advallarm tax rate that will exceed the effective tax rate.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I also moved that we have two public hearings on August twenty-eighth and September fourth, to discuss the proposed advallarm rate that will exceed the effective tax rate.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-four.
Action item number twenty-four, consideration and action regarding an appeal by Loma Alta Investments LLC pursuant to section fifty through seventy-one of the city of Brownsville Code of Ordinances of the denial of a request for exception to install a fire sprinkler system.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the commission, for this appeal and this item, the property owner desires to develop three dwelling units located at nine twenty-five West Elizabeth Street.
Yes, ma'am?
With the presentation by the representative, but given that...
I'm sorry, maybe, maybe, is that microphone working, or is just my ears going bad?
There we go, I'll get closer.
There you go.
Mayor and commissioners, initially, I had a concern with the representative of Loma Alta Investments addressing the commission directly, given that this wasn't set up as a public hearing, but since this is an appeal pursuant to section fifty seventy-one, and this, the, that section is silent as to the procedures of how to proceed with that appeal, I'm recommending to go ahead and allow the presentation by the representative of Loma Alta to continue, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Another problem. So typically, this type of developments must comply with the city of Brownsville Code of Ordinances, specifically, chapter eighteen, which is the building code, chapter fifty, which is the fire code, chapter three forty, which is the townhouse projects ordinance, chapter three forty-eight, which is the zoning ordinance. The property owner is appealing the fire chief's denial to exempt the required installation of a fire sprinkler system, not the land use or the building code requirements. Should the applicant or property owner wish to, wish to do so, he would have to apply through other venue, through another route. For a little bit of a background on this, the chapter three forty ordinance, which is called the townhouse projects ordinance, was not being enforced, and because of this, it was determined that projects that applied for a building permit beginning on October twelve, twenty seventeen, would need to fully comply with chapter three forty if they wished to be developed as townhomes. All projects submitted prior to October twelve, twenty seventeen, were permitted to follow the previous practice. There are two ways that three dwelling units can be developed, one is as apartments, as apartments, the fire code dictates that it requires a fire sprinkler system, the building code dictates that it requires a fire sprinkler system, and the, and compliance with the necessary zoning chapter, which is three forty-eight, is necessary based on the desired use. For townhomes, the fire code requires a fire sprinkler system, however, city ordinance exempts this requirement. For building code, it is required, the fire sprinkler system as well, city ordinance also exempts this requirement. For townhomes, chapter three forty is a requirement, and it requires that to be called a townhome, it needs to be individually platted lots. The resolution for this, for this item would have, presents the property owner with three options, one, to either call his, his development apartments, and at that point, install a fire sprinkler system, call the development townhomes and individually plat lots, or redesign their project. I would like to note, though, that there are six projects that have complied fully since the, since the October twelfth deadline, and our concern is that if the appeal is granted today, this will open the city to liability for selective enforcement. I'll go ahead and hand this over to the fire representative.
Good evening, I'm Daniel Villarreal, Brownsville Fire Marshal. Basically, all I'm going to do is read the codes that the decision was made for me to make this decision, it's the automatic sprinkler system.
Raise it, yeah.
Automatic sprinkler system shall be installed in accordance with section nine oh three, shall be provided throughout all buildings with a group R fire rating. This section requires sprinkler systems in buildings that contain a group R fire area. This includes uses such as hotels, group homes, apartments, and dormitories, there are no minimum criteria and no exemptions for this rule.
Marshal, and this is everything that took up, once we adopted international fire code, right?
That is correct.
Okay, now let me ask you something. Is there something that can be done within the department, with you, with the chief, to be able to continue to follow fire code? But I know that I had a, a project, maybe a couple of months ago, with a gentleman that came from suspects from Houston. Now Houston, what they did was they follow international fire code, but there was room in there where they left for not only local but state to be able to work within it, and one of the examples was that they would use firewalls versus a sprinkler system. And now, my question then, but unfortunately, you were not here, was, if it's good for Houston, can it be good for Brownsville? Or is it because simply we're following international fire code verbatim, as per, and, and not making those kinds of adjustments?
Basically, it's the second part, we're just following the two thousand twelve, not making any adjustments, because usually it gives you an exemption when there is an exemption to a code, like on this one I just read, there's no criteria and no exemptions for this specific code. Another, it might change, there, we have given exemptions to other projects, but not pertaining to the sprinkler system.
Marshal.
Unless it's existing buildings.
If I may, Marshal, do you know how many plans there are currently in the United States?
How many?
Fire codes? How many fire codes there are?
I have none.
Just nationally?
No, that's...
And internationally? But there's more than one?
Oh, yes.
Several?
There's several.
Many? And we just decided to adopt this one as a whole?
Yeah, the city adopted two thousand twelve, back in September of twenty fifteen.
If I may, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Amaru Choa. In regards to that question, the requirement is still there, there's two different subjects being discussed here, the requirements of how you're going to build the building, and the requirements of chapter three forty, which requires the planning of the property, it's two different subjects, the fire code, the residential code, and the building code requires different systems of protection for the building, in this case, you can use a fire sprinkler system, a fire alarm, or a demicing wall complying with the requirements of the residential code, like in this case, for townhouses. But it's two different subjects completely, like how you're going to build the building, and the, the requirements of chapter three forty, which requires plating lots, if you're going to build townhouses.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Sanchez, I'm here on behalf of Loma Alta. My, my client began his efforts in March of two thousand seventeen to get approvals, and he filed applications with planning and zoning, got approved, registered it as a triplex, registered, then got another permit in May for the specific use permit, well, that was in July of two thousand seventeen, so he got his first permit in May of twenty-five, May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, his second one on July twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, and it's a fifty-foot lot, it's a triplex. He's trying to put the parking on the front, and they're saying that he would have to come in if he were designated as a townhome and subdivide this property. Well, we're not, it's almost impossible to subdivide the property under the current planning and zoning requirements, because this is only about a six thousand square foot lot, and so it, you can't get much smaller than that, and if you tried to resubdivide this fifty-foot lot, you would have to build a road into the property with a cul-de-sac, which would make it almost impossible to, to develop. There was a, another fifteen-unit complex that was approved five days after my client got disapproved, and they were approved for the same reason, they were not required to resubdivide, and they were, all they, all they had to do is put up a firewall. Well, that's exactly what we're, we've suggested since day one, is to put up a firewall, just like everybody else has been doing, and then we were told, well, they changed the ordinance, and now they're enforcing the ordinance, the ordinance has been in effect, I think, since nineteen seventy-one, and, and so then, now they're enforcing it, but they never gave us any notice that they were going to say, well, there's a cutoff date, so everybody needs to know, after you do this, after this date, you're on, you're on, you're on notice, we were never given notice of that. So here we have one apartment developer, or one townhome developer, who's getting approved four days after we were disapproved. The, we, we then started looking at the issue of townhomes, why are they requiring that we subdivide into townhomes? Condominiums don't subdivide, but, but now they're saying, well, you got to do it for townhomes, it makes no logical sense, and it has no relation whatsoever to fire safety, and fire safety is what this is all about. So they're saying, well, you know, but we're trying to preserve fire safety, well, if so, then go to the approved exemptions, one of the approved exemptions is for a firewall, and we, we comply with that. So our position is that, since we've taken the efforts, and we started in March and April two thousand seventeen to get here today, we would like to be approved for that, and have it approved as townhomes, so that we can get our, our building permit. The, the other thing is, because of the issue related to whether or not we're a townhome, we wrote off to the International Code Council, and they certified, and I believe you all have copies of it, certified that we are, we do qualify as townhomes, not as, as an apartments, it's on page S eight of your handout. We also checked with the International Code Council to determine whether or not we were required to have a sprinkler system. The answer is no, you're not required to have a sprinkler system if you have the necessary firewall. What we see happening is that the focus seems to be on requiring fire sprinkler systems, but there are exemptions that are allowed, but nobody from the relevant departments is approving that, because they just want, would rather have you be required to place a sprinkler system in place. This is not going to be one living unit on top of another unit, like you would see in two or three-story apartments, these are just townhomes, two-story townhomes, three living units. So we have three living units, they're being denied the ability to build compared to fifteen living units that were approved five days after we were disapproved. Basically, I'll answer any other questions that you all may have about this, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
If we may, I would like to address some of the, some of the, some of the things that were discussed here by the applicant's representative. So the project that they're referring to did not, did get approved a couple of days before his submittal, but this project had been in the planning, in the planning department under review for quite some time, their submittal actually was on July fifth. Now, their submittal and the applications that they're discussing were purely on the zoning side, this is, this is the land use only, not the building permit, nor the, nor the construction plans, so those were submitted after the cutoff date. This ordinance should have been enforced since nineteen seventy-one, since its adoption, so we're not required to notify that the ordinance is in existence, it's been in existence for a long time. And as to the other, this project specifically that he's referring to was grandfathered in under the previous practice, because he was never told, you know, about, about this ordinance either. So I think that right here, we're, we're being confused by what is being brought forward. The building official for the ICC actually was discussing in the email, as far as I remember, that this, in the plan submitted, the construction documents looked like, in fact, like a townhome, but it is a zoning or the Brownsville Code of Ordinances that actually addressed the individual plating. Now, if we refer back to one of the slides, you would see that the fire code, again, and the building code under the ICC, or in this case IRC, which is the International Residential Code, require the fire sprinkler system. What exempts it is the city ordinance, and that was passed through a Senate bill, which is, I believe, was fourteen ten, back in two thousand and nine. So it's two different things, I think that they're being confused, and, and I just wanted to clarify, and then of course, answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Is it typical that permits such as this take over a year to come to a resolution?
No, it does not, but in this particular case, the, the person that had this project exchanged contractors, and that's why it took that long.
No, I...
This is not a public hearing, no.
No, I'm sorry, this, this, this is a private, Dennis would have the chance to represent it like a good lawyer, his client.
Basically, the fire department in email correspondence back to us admitted that they felt that this was a townhome, not an apartment, and simply because of the wording in the nineteen seventy-one ordinance that says, well, you have to subdivide for townhomes, but that functionally, it's a townhome. It's interesting to note that the, the project that was approved five days after we were disapproved was quote-unquote grandfathered in, because they weren't given notice. Well, I can tell you right now, we weren't given notice either, so why aren't we grandfathered in? So there is, seems to be a disparity between why, one person is being treated one way, why somebody else is being treated completely different. The issue here is, functionally and practically speaking, this is a three-unit triplex, which should be treated like a triplex as a townhome, and without having to subdivide, when, if you look at the map that you've been provided, it's functionally impossible to subdivide that property into lots, because it's only a fifty-foot lot, so you can't make it smaller, so, and I know in South Padre Island, when they do it, they basically use, they condoize everything, because it's, the lot line is sort of irrelevant unless you're going to sell townhomes. In this case, we're not going to sell townhomes, we're going to rent townhomes, and so if we're going to not sell, if we need to put a restriction on it, that we're not going to sell them lot, you know, townhome by townhome, we'd be glad to do it, put it on the plat, put it on, you know, in the deed records, but in this instance, I don't see the necessity of requiring what is basically an obsolete requirement in a nineteen seventy-one ordinance.
Mayor, Commissioner, you've, you've heard the behind where the planning department and services stand on this, and I believe it moves on to what the appeal, unless you need further questions from staff? I think, I don't think we go back forth about, we've gone through this, back and forth, I've been included in this conversation, about determination, who's, who's right, who's wrong, who's this, and I think we're just going to start this conversation again. Where it stands right now is, the planning and development service, the planning, zoning, the options are install fire sprinkler, and I guess the appeal here is, if the commission wishes, is to overturn that, and say, okay, they, they approved the appeal, allow it to have, without fire sprinklers, unless you want more information, I, I just...
But it has the firewalls right now, right?
Yes.
Well, I think the obvious thing is that these codes are so conflicted, that we need to just review all the, those codes, and make them more user-friendly for everybody.
And, and I, I agree, Mayor Commissioners, I think, but as Connie mentioned, that there are individuals that are complying, so I think that's my concern too, is when confusing, and it's different, but there's agencies who, there's companies who are complying with it, and they're actually big developers that are continuing to install, and we've worked with many of them, and they've come to work with us, so I understand that sometimes the cost is prohibitive, but we also want to ensure that safety is there, so I think, I think that's where I sit at, is as city management, I think that's where the department and the fire marshal as well, but I think that's the great thing about this, we have the commander and the commissioner too, that offers an appeal opportunity, if that's where we go, but yes, you're right, Commissioner, we will, we always look at our code and ordinances, and look at our books, and we, we come to the understanding that we adopted it in two thousand twelve without researching it, looking through it, but that's what we're trying to do as well, we're just doing cleanup at this time.
And Michael, I think you have to have the overriding concern that we should all have is the safety.
Yes.
And that's really, you know, because if something happens, and then we are... And that's really, you know, because if something happens and then we are, you know, faced with a situation, not only is the owner of the property faced with a situation, but we're also taking a look at what is the, the safety of the public, which is what we're supposed to be looking at. Kind of in, and I know ordinance is taken, we've got a legal opinion that we have to follow the ordinance, if I recall correctly.
That's correct.
But again.
And, and you're, you're correct, Mayor. And I think that's where we all, we err on, on, on the other side of when it comes down to safety.
As a small business owner who's been affected by this exact same code, I would like to see city staff go back and look at ways that could be more clear and user-friendly and define, of course, safety is number one, but when you are a business owner, it's not to say that safety doesn't come first, but fire extinguishers and firewalls, and there are other methods that are more cost-effective. And, and that's where I stand as a small business owner. We just need to be more available and clear with people who want to open businesses and, and develop.
The number one complaint I get, and I'm addressing it to you, and of course, to the marshal, is that everything is fine when I'm building my business in Brownsville. Everything has been great through the process till I get to the sprinkler system. And then I'm completely out of budget. Then I'm, I've, I've got a lady that's coming in to see Michael because she's going to have to shut down her business because she is required to provide a sprinkler system. I'm not saying that she's looking for a grandfather i-in, into the building. She's, she leases the building. The owners know we're interested in putting in the sprinkler system. So she says, you want to continue, you got to put in the sprinkler system. It's eighty thousand dollars. Where do you pull out eighty thousand dollars? What bank is going to lend you eighty thousand dollars right now?
This is an existing business?
Yes.
So how were they able to operate in the building without?
They've been, they've been able to operate. In other words, it's, it's a functioning business.
If it's a functioning business, that they would have been grandfathered in without a prior sprinkler system, it's the change of use that triggers the need for the sprinkler system. If it's an existing building that is, business that has been operating, I don't understand how they could now be required a fire sprinkler system.
Okay. Counselor, we are on item number twenty-four here for a while. How, what is it, if you have a motion? How does, how does this work? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
As far as, my recommendation is in agreement with the city managers and Ms. Minor's department as well. And since, as far as the process, since.
No, I mean, you say, you, you have, I'll entertain a motion for the denial of the request? Or is that, is that how?
To grant the exception.
Yes, because.
To grant the exception or to deny the exception?
That's right. But I, that's what I'm saying. The way this thing has been worded, it says, action regarding an appeal of the denial of a request for an exception.
Right. So either you're going to, you know, overturn the decision of the fire marshal or accept.
I just don't know what kind of motion to ask for.
I guess a motion to deny the appeal or motion to, okay, it would.
I think the proper way be to, for us to either grant an exception to them or deny it.
I, I guess I will move to grant an exception.
I'll second.
To Loma Alta Investments LLC.
I'll second.
Would that be sufficient?
That would be, that would be sufficient.
Okay. Now, you've got a motion and you've got a second to grant an except, an exemption, okay?
Exemption.
All right. Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You got, you got the majority. Okay.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Sure.
I'll move to vote by roll call.
Thank you.
Aye.
Ayes.
Aye.
That's what I'm saying. I thought I heard everybody.
I didn't hear this answer.
It's my hearing aid. Okay, thank you.
It was plenty of fire extinguishers and that they're maintained up to date.
Item number twenty-five.
Action item number twenty-five, consideration and action for the substantial amendment to the City of Brownsville Citizen Participation Plan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Jurisdictions who receive HUD funding are required to have a citizen participation plan, also known as a CPP, that sets forth policies and procedures for citizen participation. The plan is submitted and approved with the five-year consolidated plan, which in our case in Brownsville, it was approved back in August two thousand and fifteen. With the CPP, we must provide for and encourage citizen participation and require to have public notices, hearings, and request comments for any substantial amendments to the citizen participation plan. The last amendment that was approved for the citizen participation plan was back in July of two thousand and sixteen. The city has been very active with its Community Voice Campaign, which ensures residents have the direct and active participation in the decision-making process for funding. This plan also requires the participation of homeless or previously homeless individuals. And the city launches its Community Voice Campaign at the homeless shelter each year. And tonight, I present to you the proposed changes to the plan. And these include updates with language that clarifies and further defines amendments. And that's the definition between the substantial amendment and a minor amendment, and what exactly triggers those amendments, a specific section for hearings. And it always had a section for public hearings, but it was scattered. So now there's a defined section for that. Also, it defines clearly the process for uncommitted funds. So that would allow for the inclusion of secondary projects as part of the one-year action plan in the event that one of those primary projects meet unforeseen obstacles. And of course, the secondary projects would go through the same process of the citizen participation plan. And it also would replace the Brownsville Citizen Advisory Committee and enhance the scope of the Community Voice Campaign in order to continue broadening, broadening the public participation with direct resident input. The campaign has been strong and it has been present within the last six years. And we've received a lot of communication directly with the citizens in regards to community priorities. It also engages participation of local, regional institutions, the local public housing authority, continuum of care, businesses, developers, nonprofit organizations, and philanthropic organizations, philanthropic organizations. So as far as the process, we went over the comment period, which was held for thirty days. We had two public hearings. There was no opposition from the public regarding the proposed changes. And the feedback received was in support of the proposed changes. Once approved, the next step is to submit our substantial amendment to HUD. Are there any questions?
Okay. Say a motion.
What a group.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number twenty-six, consideration and action on Resolution twenty-eighteen dash zero thirty-six to approve the presentation of the City of Brownsville Allocation of Community Development Block Grant, Home Improvement Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant funding for the twenty-eighteen one-year action plan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Tonight, I will be presenting to you the proposal for the one-year action plan. Earlier today, you saw the formula funding for transportation with B Metro for transportation. This is the version, but with community development. And so, as you know, our office is in charge and responsible for administering HUD funds through the U.S. Housing and Urban Development for the City of Brownsville. Since fall of two thousand and seventeen, we have been working on the development of this plan. And on this slide, we have the department's vision and mission. The department is made up of two divisions. Tonight, we'll be focusing on the Community Development Division. During the last program year, the city received a total of over three point four million dollars in grant entitlement funds for community development. This year, once approved, we will be receiving close to three point eight-five million in grant entitlement funds. So the allocation increased for this year. As far as HUD, provide support for the community development activities. It allocates funding to state and local governments. It is based on a formula basis. And some of the items that they look at is population, poverty, overcrowding, age of housing, et cetera. The City of Brownsville does receive the annual allocation for three different programs. The Community Development Block Grant, which you hear a lot, CDBG, home, and Emergency Solutions Grant, which is also known as ESG. And it's important to note that each program, the funding needs to meet specific federal objectives. For CDBG, there's three national objectives, which are outlined in the PowerPoint. One of the examples is benefiting low and moderate income persons. For the home program, the federal objectives are also listed there. And examples for that is to provide affordable decent housing. You hear a lot about the tax credits and all the momentum with affordable housing. So we're all excited about that. And the last program, ESG, some of the examples of federal objectives that need to be met is street outreach, rapid rehousing, and emergency shelter. To receive HUD funds, the city must complete and submit a consolidated plan, which has been done. It was done in two thousand and fifteen. We also need to submit an annual action plan. So this would be year four of the two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen consolidated plan. As far as the Community Voice Campaign, which was mentioned earlier, the, through the development of the comp plan and action plans, we engage the community a lot through this process. Opportunities are built with the citizens to go through that process with input, including public hearings, reviewing program performance, which is done in December, and also allowing written feedback. This past November, we kicked off our six annual Community Voice Campaign. So we want to thank everyone who participated in that. The results, identified priorities are taken into account during the application review process. And in the next slide, you'll see the funding that's broken down between the three different programs. For CDBG, it's close to two point seven million. For home, nine hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And for ESG, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight. You'll also notice a section there that's home program income. That's income that's generated through different projects within the home program that cannot go back to the general funds. It has to go back to good community development funds. So it goes back to the community. The total funding available then is close to four point fifteen million. The funding amounts do change on an annual basis depending on Congress. For the eligible applicants, our department kickstarted the whole process for funding back in November two thousand and seventeen with our Community Development Summit. This is where we invite the community to learn more about our funding, the community development funds through workshops, and announce the process for organizations to request HUD funding. There were a total of twenty applications submitted and twenty were eligible. The total amount that was requested was over five point three million. It was a very competitive process. And as you recall, there was only four point one million. The criteria that is used when providing recommendation for funding included the project proposal itself, the capacity for the agency, audits of the organization, financial cap, capacity, any monitorings on the performance on that, and also the expenditures in the past. Who is the actual beneficiaries from the program? Sustainability, the plan for sustainability. If in case there's no future funding with HUD, is that program sustainable with other funding? And then also how those activities will be accomplished. For the home program, the amounts are listed on the slide. There's a ten percent cap that's allowable for administrative purposes. The rest of the allocation will go to Community Development Corporation of Brownsville for the home buyer assistance program. This provides closing costs and down payment assistance for low to moderate income individuals for eligible first-time homebuyers. And then a portion will go to Brownsville Affordable Home Ownership Corporation for new construction of single-family homes for eligible first-time homebuyers. This project.
How do you, why do you give one seven hundred thousand and the other one you give them half?
Because it's depending on the actual program. So the first one is down payment assistance. The impact of that program, we've been, a couple of years ago, we were listed as a top as far as providing assistance to individuals through that program. So it's a very popular program.
Now, the home proposed projects, is it to build new homes or to help people with closing costs?
For which one?
Is it to provide closing costs or to provide new homes?
So for the down payment assistance is to provide closing costs and down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers. So it helps them provide that gap funding that's needed.
Who gets to decide which homes that are purchased? Can I go apply for this? Like, if I go buy a home?
Yes, if you're interested, you can go. We have this one administered with Community Development Corporation of Brownsville.
So who decides, who gets?
Community Development. So it would go through, depending on the homeowner, they go through their lender, and then the lender provides the information. And they go through that process.
Does BAT, I'm sorry, does BAT provide any down payment assistance?
Any what? I'm sorry?
Down payment assistance like CDCB?
If they have, so we've provided single-family homes and they've been able to use down payment assistance to help close all those homes.
And Ms. Felicity, let me ask you, the total estimate funding available, this is broken down in three, in, I'm sorry if I misunderstood.
Oh, no.
In three programs, right?
Yes, three different programs.
Okay, so we can't give like more money to like the Ozenam Center? I think that was at the, my last question.
Yeah, so it's very restrictive. The Community Development Block Grant Funds has its specific federal objectives. The home program has its own. And then the emergency solution, that would be the one for the homeless.
They can apply for it if they want. They could apply for it if they offer this, right?
Yes.
Commissioner, anybody could apply, even if they offer that kind of services, they could apply to this fund. So it's open.
Yeah, so we've had organizations like the Ozenam apply for that funding.
Is that how they built those houses they have?
No.
Which ones?
No, that was something else. They have homes on their property.
Oh, the transitional homes. Yeah, so the funding for ESG goes straight, straight to the shelter to help the individuals for their stay. And we've also provided rapid rehousing funds.
Excellent job, by the way.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And then just a note for the Brownsville Affordable Home Ownership Corporation, we have to provide funding for a, an organization that's called the Choru, Community Housing Development Organization. And they have to go through this certification process. So that, that portion's very restrictive, that fifteen percent. For the community development side, as far as capital projects, well, CDBG overall, there's a twenty percent cap for administrative purposes. And one point nine million will be going to capital projects. Once again, with our Community Voice, drainage and streets were identified as top priorities from our Community Voice Campaign. Funding is recommended for the following projects. Calvin Street, which is a full reconstruction and canal improvements. That's a drainage improvement along the canal that's owned by the city. And it's very high need. Also, funding will be going to street improvements. So that includes street overlays, the curb and gutter. And there's, that will help a lot of streets. Once they're environmentally cleared, they'll go through that process. So we're really excited about that. And then finally, for fire rescue equipment, it's going to fund two terrain emergency vehicles. And these are mini ambulances that can provide medical support in hard-to-reach areas. Some of the areas can include at trails, at events, during football games, for example, anywhere where it's hard for an ambulance to, to provide, to a normal ambulance supply service. The next category we have is our CDBG social services. An estimated total of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-six will be used for social services. And the organizations are laid out on the PowerPoint presentation. Funding will be provided to Moody Clinic for speech and language, physical, and occupational therapy to children. And then also for court-appointed special advocates of Cameron and Willacy Counties, CASA, for recruitment and training community volunteers to speak on behalf of children who are victimized by abuse and/or neglect in their home. For tip of Texas Family Outreach, for parenting program that will provide parenting classes to families who are reintegrated by CPS. Sunshine Haven, who provides twenty-four-hour care for terminally ill that are enrolled in, in hospice care. And their respective funding recommendations are listed on the slide. And this is where we go back for the ESG. This is the one that's focused on services for the homeless. So for the program year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, the allocations will, for ESG will cover seventy, seven point five percent cap for admin purposes. And the rest will be funded for the Ozenam Center, Friendship of Women, and COB for the Homeless Management Information System. This is, this is actually required. It's a mechanism used to track the homeless and help identify needs and resources. Funding will also go to Friendship of Women for rapid rehousing to provide services to individuals and families who are at the shelter and require assistance to obtain permanent housing. Ozenam Center for Emergency Shelter, and that will be funding for the temporary homeless at the shelter. And it provides meals, bedding, case management, et cetera. And Friendship of Women, Emergency Shelter as well, to provide comprehensive victim services and temporary shelter for victims of family violence and sexual assault. Okay, so the comment period was kicked off with a publication in the Brownsville Herald. There's a thirty-day comment period that started July second and ended August first. We had two public hearings. The, the input that was received, the citizens fully support. The, the input that was received, the citizens fully supported the recommendations, there was no opposition, there was a lot of excitement, particularly more towards the, the streets and the drainage projects. And upon approval by City Commission, the one-year action plan will be submitted to HUD by August the 15th, and we should be receiving HUD approval in October of 2018. Please let me know if you have any questions, and your consideration and action is greatly appreciated.
When are we gonna go back to funding streets through CDBG?
We are, and, and I think that was the, when we said we apply, we apply.
The majority is the streets.
That's the goal of CDBG is, is, I said, everybody can apply as long as you apply for streets and drainage.
And in our last service, the last couple of years, that's what it has, has been as a priority.
Anyway, October is right around the corner, so.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number 27.
Action item number 27, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase of a Cascade Mobile Air System through Delta Industrial Service and Supply.
On this last item, I need to abstain on that because I'm the chairman of the Ozenam, and I don't want to create a conflict, so change my vote to an abstention, please.
Good evening, honorable mayor members of the commission. Tonight, we recommend approval for the purchase and delivery of a mobile Cascade trailer through Delta Industrial Supply. We opened it up to bids and only received two, two bids. The difference between the highest and the lowest was about 15,000. So funds have been secured through CDBG 2017, 2018 grant, and tonight we are asking for the approval for that contract.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Action item number 28, discussion and action on authorizing the interim city manager to execute the Brownsville Metropolitan Planning Organizing Funding Agreement with TechStop.
Hello, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, commissioners. What you have before you is essentially a funding contract. It's an agreement between the city, which is fiscal agent for the MPO, and TechStop. These are federal funds that flow to the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, but TechStop, the Texas Department of Transportation, is really the conduit, so our agreement is with them. This will allow funds to flow for the next six years. If you have any questions, I'll try to address them.
Do you recommend approval?
Do you recommend the approval?
We definitely recommend approval.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. See you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Action item number 29, acknowledgement of the presentation by the Brownsville Beautification Committee on the BBC Matching Grant Program.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city commission, let me introduce Chloe Dotson, the vice chair of the Brownsville Beautification Committee.
For now. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Chloe Dot, how do you, do you smooth this, ma'am? I wasn't actually supposed to present, so I'm gonna fly through this because I only have three minutes. Okay, so Brownsville Beautification Committee, so I basically just want to introduce ourselves. I know we haven't really presented to City Commission in a long time, but just wanted to go over some of our latest endeavors, give you a brief history of who we are, what we've done in the city, and then also talk about our endeavors for the near future. So just, you know, table of contents, introduction, vision, history, historical highlights, and current projects, and then we'll go into future projects. So our vision statement is to plan, implement, and maintain beautification projects in the city of Brownsville. History and background, it was established basically to provide beautification projects to the city. They're planning coordinated at our monthly meetings, and every year we develop a budget and different strategies to, in order to achieve sustainable beautification projects throughout the city. Some of the highlights, we recreated in 1991, in 2000, we planted 10,000 trees. As of 2016, with the help of the city of Brownsville and other partnerships, we have planted more than 50,000 trees in the city of Brownsville, which is great. And then, of course, we, some other things, city forester position established in 2001, and then also annually, we plant trees and give out trees for the Arbor Day ceremonies. 16 years consecutively. I know this is really hard to see, but this is an illustration of all the different BBC projects in the city of Brownsville. So you see that they're not isolated to one particular district, they're all throughout the city of Brownsville, north, south, east, and west. So these are a list of some of the projects that we did back in the, back in, I wouldn't say back in the day, but, so the projects that we did some time ago. I'm just gonna fly through these pictures, I'm probably at a minute and a half right now. So Bernard Street, we, you know, some of you guys have probably seen some of these, this is one of my favorites. Some more projects alone, 802, these are some more of our completed projects, this is a project, a welcome Brownsville project, this is over at the library. Everyone sees this on their way, right? Favorite. And this is actually a project we just finished, partnership with city of Brownsville, we just actually installed that pergola you see in the middle. Roy Reyes and Gina are working on that. I'm just gonna fly through these. This is one of my favorites as well, I know you guys have seen that. It's really beautiful at night. These completed projects. And this is a picture of our Arbor Day celebration with Mr. Roy Reyes, along with some of the other stakeholders and participants that we have. You guys are very familiar, we just recently changed our bylaws and ordinance, it basically helped us minimize and kind of concentrate. Before, we had 16 board members, I can barely get a quorum with nine, so we actually reduced that. So now our maximum is 12, and then we, our minimum is now down to nine, which is great. And then, of course, our ordinance is, just to give people more duties and roles and responsibilities of what they're supposed to do as a BBC board member. We also have some new board members, we have Carol, Demar, myself, we have Amy, Laura, Kevin, Oscar, and Damaris. We also have Rose Timmer, we have Jolie Rubio, we have a lot of people, of course, Rose Gowan, Commissioner Rose Gowan. We have a lot of people and a lot of support to help, you know, with the history with it as well, we have young people to like really push it. So these are some of the projects that we want to do. Partnering with COB is one of the big projects, big endeavors, we want to partner with them on a lot of their trailway systems, maybe even BCIC. We've been partnering and talking to PUB, and CUB, PUB, COB, BCIC, and the Underpass Project doing some lighting. And then we're also trying to work with new people, right? We, we actually just started a matching grant program. Right now, we have about 10 to 12 grantees, about $5,000 each, and it supports beautification throughout the entire city. So they have to come up with a maintenance plan, they have to match one-to-one, and these are some of the matching grant participants, the Brownsville Historical Association, all of these organizations want to beautify their community. So we want to partner with the city, partner with kind of the big dogs, but then also give the opportunity for smaller businesses, smaller organizations to beautify their own. Thank you for your time.
We have, we have some native plants for you tonight, so if you can present one, I think we deliver it tomorrow. They had to go in native, and we have some people that are recipients of the new grants tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, needs a little water there, girl. Thank you.
I'm a master gardener, yeah.
Thank you all, thank you so much. I think all of us get a plant over there, so that we're...
We'll have them delivered.
Thank you, okay, yeah. Everybody gets one, okay. And I, I think what happens is, this is a, an acknowledgement, so...
Acknowledged.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 30.
Action item number 30, consideration and action to award a term contract for the pest control services for the city of Brownsville Department Facilities.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. The Purchasing Department would like to, to request authorization to award a term contract for pest control services for the Brownsville, for the city of Brownsville. This is going to elicit termite and pest management out of Brownsville for the stipulated prices, there's a tab sheet attached to the agenda, and this is a three-year contract. This contract will expire in September 30th, 2021, with no renewals.
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 31.
Action item number 31, consideration and action to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of limestone materials for the city of Brownsville.
How you doing? Good evening, honorable mayor, city commissioners, tonight requesting your approval to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of limestone material for the city of Brownsville Public Works Department. Contract to be awarded to Vulcan Materials out of Brownsville, Texas, low responsive bidder, in the amount of $24.35 a cubic ton, to be delivered to the Public Works Yard. This contract shall commence upon approval from the City Commission and will expire a year from today, with the option to renew the term of this contract annually for two one-year terms each. Fundings for this materials will derive from the general fund, account number 1017417, 743 materials, and available funds for designated for street constructions.
Are you a motion, would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Passes. Thank you, Santana.
Action item number 32, consideration and action to approve the expenditures and contract for an executive director with the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation. GIBIC.
Mayor, commissioners, following the advice of Dana Santi from Navarro and Rocha, I move that the commission approve the employment contract with Mr. Mario Solia for the position of executive director of the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation, and expenditures contained therein. Said contract has already been approved by the GIBIC board and is for a term of five years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. Okay, I feel I need to go on the record with the following statement regarding this item. First of all, I don't think there's corporate authority to provide, in the bylaws that provide for an executive director. Also, I believe the contract is unenforceable, which I'll go into in a minute, and also because there's pending litigation about the whole process that was followed. So I feel it's an effort to force action by the commission to validate the illegality of GIBIC's process in hiring their new employee at a rate of $250,000 a year. Also, in particular, the bylaws do not provide specifically for an executive director, which is considered, I believe, an officer of a nonprofit corporation. And the bylaws were amended last July, and even though they were, there's still no provision for an executive director. Also, the reason there was no provision for executive director previously was because the Brownsville Economic Development Corporation provided for that duty. Currently, under the, the bylaws that exist, it's the president that is the authorized executive officer. So I think, I, I feel that this is just an attempt to fix the illegality of the hiring of the executive director of GIBIC, which is a typical Brownsvilleian method of dealing with problems resulting from incompetence, which is why my constituents elected me to stop, and that's what I'm trying to do. So the proper procedure, I believe, is to have the GIBIC amend their bylaws to provide for an executive director, have the bylaws approved by this commission, and rebid the position with all the information required, including the salary range. Because had this been done properly, especially advertising the salary was above $200,000 a year, I think it would have attracted more suitable prospects for this position. The illegality of the contract, and I guess the second contract that was entered into, is obvious because there have been attempts to renotice the meetings, to be in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, and I think this shows that the previous postings were inadequate. And the new contract, which refers to an employee rather than an officer like the first one did, shows that the contract was executed without authority, because now GIBIC is hiring an employee, not an executive director, according to this contract. The refusal to approve the minutes of the two contentious board meetings leading to this process, even though there have been at least three meetings since then, and there's been no approval of the minute, shows me there's a lack of transparency involved. So the other thing about litigation is that I believe that the Toma, the Texas Open Meetings Act, was violated, and that these acts are in, in excess of authority granted under the bylaws, ultra virus, in other words. So there are, it's already been reported that there's litigation regarding the unauthorized hiring of the new employee slash director, and the transcripts of these proceedings are in the process of being reviewed, and the litigation continues, and discovery in the litigation has already begun. So to me, it seems that this is an attempt to give retroactive effect to the incompetent handling of the reorganization of GIBIC and the selection of GIBIC's new employee, and to sanitize the illegality of the actions of GIBIC. So I'm urging this commission to vote nay on this matter.
If, if I may, my statement is, is a little bit different, but in an attempt to try to do what we can to go forward, one of the things that we asked, and attorneys were asked to, to give us some opinions, and it was given to us that the city commission is the authorizing agent for GIBIC, and I appreciate all the efforts of GIBIC in, in doing this. And so I'm not prepared to vote in favor of this particular motion, not for any other reason, other than I don't feel that I have had sufficient time with regards to the contract. However, what I am proposing is, and again, I am not suggesting that anybody go along with me, but I think that from what I gather from the attorneys, is that we're authorized for the expenditures, and I'm, I'm, but it, it says expenditures and contracts, so it doesn't say one or the other. So I'm prepared to have any expenditures that have been incurred or, or being incurred as a guideline, but as, as of right now, I'm not prepared to go with the entire contract.
Mayor, if I might add, for example, section 4.2, or four of the contract calls for a base salary for the first year, and then it calls for a year-two compensation, and then there's no other provision for year three, four, or five, so I don't know where they're gonna go with this, because after two years, there's no authority to pay anything else. That's one of the other issues. It also leaves the retirement up to negotiations, which is a condition subsequent, and there's some other term in number 11, which is, doesn't make any sense regarding the termination. So I want that to be on the record.
So I don't have a prepared statement, but I do have, my concern focuses on the performance measures for such a very important and expensive contract, and, and I don't see them. I, I feel that those performance measures should be in place before a contract is offered, because that person should know what they're being judged on. So that was my, that is my concern about the contract.
I guess there is, I will move for a previous question. There's a motion and a second.
And I guess you have to call the vote, Mayor.
Yeah, I do, I will. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Would it adjourn?
Seconds.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.